I'm going to call the Mojave County Board of Supervisors meeting for September 19th of 2022 to order. If you'll please all rise and join me in a invocation from Pastor Ernst, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Father God, we're thankful here this morning that we bow before you as our high King of Heaven. As the United Kingdom lays to rest their sovereign Elizabeth, Queen Elizabeth, we're thankful that we live in a country that has no king but you. And we're thankful, Lord God, that in this constitutional republic, that you've called us to liberty and to freedom. And thank you for those lofty ideals that rest within the heart of every man, woman, and child. Father, we pray for these ones who vote today, these Board of Managers. We thank you for them. They have a very heavy-duty responsibility. They stand in your stead. And, Lord, I pray that they would not only know that, but they would bow as well before you. Lord, thank you for our great country. We long to see the liberties that you have given to us continue, and in some cases, to be restored. We pray, Father, that you would help us all to bow before you. We love you, we thank you, and we love living in this great land. Bless it, Lord, I pray, and protect us, we pray. In Jesus's name, amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The Board of Supervisors made by motion recess into executive session to achieve legal advice from the board's attorneys on any item contained in this agenda pursuant to ARS 38-431.03A, 3, 4, and 7. Motion and action to call for an executive session to be held October 3rd, 2022 at 9:00 a.m. for discussion and consultation with legal counsel in accordance with ARS 38-431.03A, 3, 4, and 7 to discuss items noticed on the agenda with an asterisk.
Chairman Gould, so moved.
Second.
You've heard that motion in second. Any further discussion? Hearing, none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. The guys appear to have it, do have it, so ordered. Discussion of pending completed litigation claims and demands. Attorney Espin.
Thank you. Nothing to report to the board?
Thank you, sir. Committee or legislative reports, Supervisor Bishop?
Thank you and good morning. This past couple of weeks, I attended the County Supervisors Association outreach travel to Navajo and Coconino Counties, representing CSA as the state president. The following day, I attended the Mojave-Lapaz Workforce Development Board meeting, as well as the planning and zoning meeting of that day. Then, following that, I chaired the CSA Executive Board, as well as the Board of Directors meeting which followed. And I also attend the Arizona Association of County Officials meeting on last Friday. So that concludes my report, but I did want to take a moment of privilege and pay tribute to my husband's cousin, Mr. Joe Hart. He was a fourth-generation Mojave County rancher who's now riding a new range. Joe served the Arizona House of Representatives for nine years and served 15 more as the Arizona State Mine Inspector before retiring last year. Joe was a true gentleman and respected business owner and enjoyed his public service to Arizona, Mojave County, and to his home community of Kingman. Our thoughts and prayers are with Rhonda and the family this morning as he's laid rest at the historical chloride cemetery. I just wanted to pay my respects to Joe since I'm unable to attend. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Supervisor. Supervisor Angus?
Thank you. I attended the CSA Board of Directors meeting as well. We previewed the proposals from the counties that we will be discussing at the summit. It's going to be a very interesting summit. We learned some things that were quite troubling, that we're being asked to help on. And then, of course, our water issues will be front and center there. I too want to take a little time here. As you may or may not know, our Public Information Officer Roger Galloway has been highlighting staff members. You may have seen it in the paper. I think it's just in the Kingman Miner. I'm not sure if it's in all the papers, but it's been a really nice program. Our long-term employees and some of our directors. But this time, I want to highlight the Public Information Officer, Roger Galloway. He received, on September 12th, Roger received the key to the city from his hometown of Charleston, West Virginia, which is a big deal, I know, about keys to the city. They rarely give them out. It is a high honor. Roger Galloway has had a storied career in the entertainment business, a career Roger knew he wanted since he was four years old. He knew he wanted to get into movies and TV as an actor, and that he did. Besides stage and movie work, Roger worked on a children's show called It, in which Roger went on to win a local Los Angeles Emmy Award for his work. He learned that producing allowed him more creative power, and he went on to produce many TV specials, mostly country-themed. Roger's worked with so many legends of Hollywood, and in 1988, he was the sole writer of a TV special called United We Stand in Seoul, Korea for the 1988 Olympics. It starred Bob Hope, Julio Iglesias, Rich Little, amongst other international celebrities. One of his biggest honors was the Cowboy Hall of Fame and the Wrangler Award. He won it for writing Legends of the West, starring Jack Palant, right after Mr. Palant won his Oscar for City Slickers. That is until September 12th, when Roger was honored in his hometown with the key to the city. Congratulations, Roger, for your well-deserved recognition.
Thank you, Supervisor. Supervisor Johnson?
Very nice.
Thank you. I've submitted a report of 17 pages long, but I'm going to review it on Western Division partnership with one state meeting. That's all, Mr. Chairman.
On Friday, September 2nd, regarding the Queen Creek-Greenstone transfer of Colorado River water off of the river over 170 miles east to the town of Queen Creek so they can continue to build new homes at our river community's expense, the county and the Mojave County Water Authority and others are looking at legal options as far as that decision. And we'll see more about that this meeting. But it's something that the county of Mojave, I think, is committed to continuing to fight, especially when you look at the entire Colorado River system crashing and the fact that there's growing push from all seven basin states on the federal government to step in and mandate outcomes to make sure that we don't reach something called Deadpool, which is water not being able to get past the dams at Lake Powell and at Lake Mead. It's a very serious issue. There's over 40 million people that use the Colorado River. If water is unable to escape at the Hoover Dam, for instance, you've got 20 million Americans that lose access to the Colorado River. And if water is not able to get through the dam at Lake Powell, everybody's seen horseshoe bend in places in the Grand Canyon. If you can imagine those areas without any water in them, very serious. So we're going to continue to do what we can at Mojave County. Regarding the Walupi Valley irrigation non-expansion area hearing, so here in the Kingman area, we get 100% of our water from the Walupi Valley groundwater basin. Tomorrow evening, the Arizona Department of Water Resources will be here in this auditorium from 6:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. And they'll be having a hearing to provide sort of an explanation on what an irrigation non-expansion area is. They'll be explaining the hydrology and the latest data that they have from the USGS, from the county, and from themselves. And we're taking comments. We hope that if you're in the area, that you're able to come to that meeting, to participate in that meeting. And if you're not able to be here, the ADWR will be taking written comments through the 30th of this month, and then coming out with their decision. What an INA would do, if you look at statute, it would basically curb the growth of commercial agricultural acres that are being cultivated in the basin. So we look forward to seeing everybody tomorrow evening here in this auditorium. Also of interest, down in Cochise County, there are two AMA petitions, active management area petitions, in the Wilcox and Douglas Basins. So on August 29th, 2022, the county of Cochise called the election. That will be on the November 8th ballot for those impacted constituents. As of that date, wells cannot be drilled in the basin until after the election, and we're going to be watching those votes very closely as they could prove impactful to future efforts at the legislature on rural groundwater management. Regarding the CSA, that was already the resolution that's been presented to CSA, it's already been covered, but Mojave, Yavapai, and Coconino Counties have put forward a resolution to CSA encouraging that the association support legislation in the 2023 session that would lead to some sort of balanced groundwater management in the rural areas, which is about 85% of Arizona. Last but not least, I want to talk about the makeup of the next legislature. We think that the results of the primary and the redistricting will likely lead to a more conservative legislature next year. Republicans will likely hold the majority in the House and the Senate, but the question of the margins obviously still remains. Our own Representative Biassucci, Leo Biassucci is vying for a role as the Majority Leader, but his competition is a lady by the name of Gail Griffin, who has been strongly opposed and consistently opposed to any sort of groundwater management in the rural areas. If Representative Biassucci is not able to succeed in his race for Majority Leader, then the challenge of passing groundwater legislation becomes that much more challenging. So we're obviously fully supportive of Leo, and we wish him the best as they decide their leadership in November. And that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Supervisor.
Chairman Gould, excuse me. One clarification. Is the meeting tomorrow night going to be on people who can't come here? Can they watch it on their computers?
I'll defer that to Sam, but I believe that we're going to televise that on our livestream.
Chairman Supervisors, they have indicated their intent. We put them in touch with our IT department to facilitate all their IT needs. I can't say at this moment if they will have that option or not.
Are we going to stream it on our channel for our residents, similar to how we do with board meetings?
You know what? Nathan, I'm going to ask Nathan. Nathan's been coordinating with him, so he's heading down to the podium. Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning, Chairman Supervisors. We've been interacting with ADWR's representatives on coordination of the meeting, and right now, the plan is for them to stream using their technology. We're not planning on streaming using the county's YouTube channel. We're going to be passing the information along to use. I believe they're using, I think they're using WebEx. So Jeremy Willistine, one of our security and infrastructure managers, is setting up with them to host the meeting and coordinate all the technical aspects that they need to do for this room.
Mr. Chairman and Board Members, I think it's important to note, they asked to use the county facility, this building, because it is the most suitable for such a meeting, but they did make it clear that this is their public hearing. They will use their platform. They were grateful for the county working with them, but they wanted us to not be leading this, that it is their hearing and they will use their platform. So I don't know if that helps, but just wanted to share that with you.
Thank you, sir. County Manager Report.
Good morning again. I have a couple items, starting with, as you know, we had the county fair this weekend. Early indication is that it was successful and well-attended. A true and sincere thanks to the folks who attended from Mojave County, the sponsors, exhibitors, concessionaires, and vendors, and a great big thanks to the sheriff and the sheriff department, sheriff deputies, for providing security and safe environment. More details to follow. Our staff is processing and compiling all the information. We'll have a final report to share with you as soon as it's available. And the only other item that I have, if I may, Mr. Chair, next time we meet will be October 3rd. So with that noted, Coral Lloyd will have retired. She's retiring October 3rd, forgive me, September 30th. So the Friday before will be her last day. I just want to take this opportunity to thank Coral for 31 years of public service and a great seven or eight years of service to Mojave County as the Finance Director, and I would like to wish her well, and I trust the board would want to do the same. So thank you. And if we may, just give her applause or a clap of hands. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Coral.
It was interesting, the Kingman Daily Miner on their editorial page had a poll question, and they asked, the question was, "How did the county do running the fair?" But it's interesting, they asked that question before we even had the fair. Generally, you should probably wait until after we actually have the fair to determine how we ran the fair, so I thought that was rather interesting. Approval of the minutes of the August 15th, 2022 Board of Supervisor Meeting.
Motion to approve.
Second.
You've heard that motion in second. Any further discussion? Hearing not all is in favor, say aye.
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 Those opposed, say nay. The guys appear to have it, do have it, so order. Call to the public. Pursuant to ARS 38-431.01H, a public body may make an open call to the public during the public meeting, subject to reasonable time, place, and manner restrictions, to allow individuals to address the public body on any issue within the jurisdiction of the public body. At the conclusion of the open call to the public, individual members of the public body may respond to criticism made by those who have addressed the public body, may ask staff to review a matter, may ask that a matter be put on a future agenda. However, members of the public body shall not discuss or take legal action on matters raised during an open call to the public unless the matters are properly noticed for discussion and legal action. Tanya Dowson.
Hey, I got to make a phone call.
Good morning, Tanya Dowson, Mojave County taxpayer. I'm a refugee from California. At our Board of Supervisor meetings in California, our supervisors would ask the board if there were any items they would like to have pulled from the consent agenda. Next, they would turn to the public and give the public the courtesy of asking if any members of the public had any items they would like to have pulled from the consent agenda. When it was time for a public comment on items, we did not have to seek permission to speak ahead of time. It wasn't dictated to us what order we were to speak in. Our Board of Supervisors asked if there were members of the public who would like to comment on items, and those who wished to comment would stand up and speak. Sometimes several people wished to speak on an item, and those people would politely form a line, each taking a turn in the order they felt most comfortable. Some people liked to speak at the beginning, others felt more comfortable speaking at the end. I was surprised to find that Mojave County's public speaking policies leaned more toward the authoritarian side. I would like to pull Consent Agenda Items Number 14, 24, and 25. I wanted to comment on the $145,000 being spent for the Mojave County Housing Study Needs Assessment that was voted on last session. With the change in the trajectory of our economy, our expensive housing study may very well be obsolete in the not-too-distant future. During the last session, Michael Smith kept bringing up the Affordable Housing, or LIHTC, program, and explained that big developers were only building in metro areas. Could this be because that makes the most sense to the developers, because that's what the market is demanding? But now, thanks to Biden's pro-centralized government incentives, that's all changed. Now the centralized government appears to be pushing for high-density, low-income housing in rural areas, urbanizing our rural communities. They were pushing for this in California also. Will we then be forced to supply public transit to accommodate this development in remote areas? Meddling in the free market is dangerous, but it's okay because they're from the government and they're here to help, right? God help us. Our county in California also had visioning sessions. Groups of busybodies would vision on other people's private property. Ultimately, the county tried to redesignate land use for properties under 40 acres, from large animal to small animal land use designation. Redesignating equestrian properties would have decimated those property values. Our property rights and financial well-being were of little concern to the pro-centralized government environmentalists who were in power. We voted the authoritarian supervisors out, but Big Marijuana put them back in. Now here I am. Let's not go the way of California authoritarians. We're running out of places to escape to. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Chris Rodardi. Nan Nicole's on deck.
Chris Rodardi, Mojave County taxpayer. Following is the Bill of Rights, the first 10 amendments to the United States Constitution, which, in the interest of time, I have edited. Number one, Congress shall make no law respecting an establishment of religion or prohibiting the free exercise thereof, or abridging the freedom of speech, or of the press, or the right of the people peaceably to assemble and to petition the government for a redress of grievances. Two, the right of the people to keep and bear arms shall not be infringed. Three, no soldier shall be quartered in any house without the consent of the owner. Number four, the right of the people to be secure in their persons, houses, papers, and effects against unreasonable searches and seizures shall not be violated. The Fifth Amendment, no person shall be held to answer for a capital crime unless on a presentment or indictment of a grand jury, nor shall any person be subject for the same offense to be twice put in jeopardy of life or limb, nor shall be compelled in any criminal case to be a witness against himself, nor be deprived of life, liberty, or property without due process of law, nor shall private property be taken for public use without just compensation. Six and seven, in all criminal and civil prosecutions, the accused shall enjoy the right to a speedy and public trial by an impartial jury. Number eight, excessive bail shall not be required, nor excessive fines imposed, nor cruel and unusual punishments inflicted. Nine, the enumeration in the Constitution of certain rights shall not be construed to deny or disparage others retained by the people. And my favorite catch-all, the Tenth Amendment. The powers not delegated to the United States by the Constitution, nor prohibited by it to the states, are reserved to the states respectively or to the people. The power under the Constitution will always be in the people. It is entrusted for a certain defined purposes and for a certain limited period to representatives of their own choosing, and whenever it is exacted contrary to their interests or not agreeable to their wishes, their servants can and undoubtedly will be recalled. That was George Washington. The November 2020 election is the most critical one. I'm sorry, I've lost my spot. I know my... Excuse me. The November 2020 election is the most important in our lifetime. Its anticipated red wave, coupled with the unceasing and recalls of public servants who are sacrificing we, the people, to the globalist promise of socialism, will be overturned. In the meantime, pray unceasingly for God to save our beloved Mojave County and the United States of America. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Nan Nicole and Michael Dennis is on deck.
Good morning, Supervisors, other elected officials, audience. My name is Nan Nicole from Fort Mojave, and I have a First Amendment here, and the last part of the First Amendment is to petition the government for a redress of grievances. In our Arizona Constitution, in Article 2, Section 3, says that the Constitution is the supreme law of the land for our national government and our state governments. Then in Article 12, Section 2, our Arizona Constitution says, "The counties of the territory of Arizona as fixed by statute are hereby declared to be the counties of the state until changed by law." What I read clearly means Mojave County is subject to the United States Constitution, including the Bill of Rights and other amendments. So I'm here today to express my concern that Mojave County is accepting money from the state and federal government with contracts attached and other various documents that state Mojave County must take specific actions, such as giving staff classes in social justice and equity, just to name one. Have the requests been fulfilled? Have the staff completed these classes and have other edicts and rules been followed? If not, what is the legal limit of time the county has to do these things? What happens if millions of dollars Mojave County has paid out while not doing some of the follow-up requirements mean? Would our county then owe millions of dollars to the state and federal government? I would like assurance in writing that we are in a clear against any claims that are stated in the attached paperwork on grants, et cetera, and that Mojave County can pick and choose which requirements they will do. Is this actually okay to do or not? That's my main thing I want to find out. Please consider this call to the public, my petition to you, our county supervisors, and supply the answers in the correct fashion. I'm approaching it this way because I believe we're on a team, and I believe we're all friends here, and if we have concerns, we would like to have them addressed in a formal way so that we know that we're going to be okay. And I'm not casting aspersions against anyone, I just think that's the proper way we do everything, including the Mojave County Supervisors. So thank you very much for your attention. I appreciate it.
Thank you, ma'am. Michael Dennis and Scotty McClure's on deck.
Scotty from Bullhead. I see this where you can lock your address from the assessor's office. They're charging a $50 fee. This is a brand-new program, but people are getting ripped off from their houses and stuff, so this would be really good for me, except you're charging a $50 fee. I'm wondering if you can't get together with the assessor and waive the fee for low-income people. I'm going to be talking to her this afternoon. The fairgrounds looking better. Somebody's cutting the weeds. Man, you got a lot of them out there. And it's nice to have paper towels and soap. You need to fix up some of those campground, overnight campground sites, so you can rent them out, like put tables out there for the people, and you know, make it, you have electric plugins, you're talking, making some income there. They're in pretty bad shape, so wouldn't take you much to do. Those guys are working pretty hard on making it look better, so. What I really came up here for to address is that this outage we had down there with a cooling center you couldn't get to, you weren't allowed to go up there on the parkway, you couldn't get to it. Anybody that lived west of 95 was so screwed. The traffic was 20-mile backup. Where in the heck was the cops out there standing out there directing traffic? Where was A.D.O.T. cops? You know, saying, hey, come on. They had it backed up, it was stopped both ways. I'm so mad about that. I went up to go to Oatman, got to Gold Rush, and got turned back down. There was a cop up there turning us down. There were poles down up there. I guess I couldn't get up to the cooling station. Why weren't their generators down at the library? Or the senior center, City Hall, or that $40 million field house? I was so... You couldn't do anything. I was sweating. It kicked my COPD up a notch, and I'm not real happy about that because it's never going to go down again. I'm going to be walking a little bit slower. That's why I sit here, because I can't walk from up there, it wears me out. I'm livid over this. This reminds me of Hurricane Katrina. Remember, it took them four days to respond to the dead people, and I don't know if we lost any people over this hot air. It was over 100 degrees there. Thank God Smith was open, but you couldn't, they wouldn't sell ice. They opened up because they had a generator. Where were all the generators? No McDonald's restaurants were open, nobody, the radio stations were out, and that should be illegal. No information from anybody.
Thank you, sir. Michael A. Dennis. Okey-dokey, moving on. We have a presentation to recognize the members of the Mojave County Sheriff's Office, K9 Foundation. Good morning, Sheriff.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, distinguished members of the board, Manager Elters, Attorney Esplin, and of course, our beloved Clerk of the Board, Ms. Jenny. This is always exciting for me to come before you and not have to ask for something within a budget or bring up something that's problematic. This is simply a time to recognize some local individuals that are very deserving, and so I want to thank you all for allowing me this brief period to do just that. We have a group of individuals that have assisted us in not only making the sheriff's office better, but the county better, and assisting the citizens as a whole. And to give you a little background, I've been with the sheriff's office now for 32 years. For the majority of that time, we have not really had a K9 program, not a functioning K9 program. We piecemeal, but never really had a solid program. In 2017, I was approached by a group of local citizens who wanted to assist us in doing just that, creating a K9 foundation. I was hesitant, I understood the cost associated, I hoped that they would too, and they assured me that this is something that they would do, is something they could get done. So in, again, 2017, they approached me and they said, "We're going to start a foundation." And so I said, "Well, if you can pull it off, let's see what happens." From that time, these individuals have worked tirelessly. They put in their own time, resources, offered their own money to make sure that our K9 program has and will continue to be a success. As a result, we now have five Kanines and handlers stationed around the county. These are fully trained. These are fully trained. K-9... Well, let me back up. They're fully trained, but moreover, they're fully supported by the program itself. So every cost associated, from the food to the veterinary expense on down the line, the training is supported by the K-9 Foundation. So I would like to bring them up today. If I could get John Sancelli, Ginny Howardson, Cheryl Berg, and Sherry Almeyer, please come We have one more not in attendance. That would be Sandy Schrader. And I want to thank all of the members of our foundation. The folks coming down right now are the founding members. They have been involved with this from day one. And the plaques read the same. Come on down, guys. Stand next to the chief, face in the audience, they're going to want to see you. The plaque reads as follows. "This award is given in recognition of your hard work and dedication to the Mojave County Sheriff's Office, K-9 Foundation. As a 2017 original founding member, you have been instrumental in the highly successful program. The K-9 Foundation has afforded the Sheriff's Office the ability to purchase, train, and deploy Canines countywide, which have been a tremendous impact on illegal drug trafficking, patrol functions, and deputy safety. This all comes at no direct cost to the citizens of Mojave County. With boundless appreciation, I thank you." Ladies and gentlemen, please, a round of applause for our K-9 Foundation members. And I'll leave it at that. I know our K-9 President would like to make a brief statement, so I would ask that you allow that. John, a very brief statement.
It's a pleasure to address the Board. I don't know how many Italians you know can keep it brief. That's pretty tough. But anyway, I was a Deputy in Minnesota for 28 years. I had the fortune to work with the K-9 Unit in St. Paul, Minnesota. Moved here, met a guy named Doug Schuster. I prodded him, and I wanted to know how he felt about taking care of his people, about taking care of the county. I worked for three different sheriffs in Minnesota. Two of them were not so good. One was great. I moved down here and met this guy. I was impressed. So I wanted to make a commitment to help him and assist him and make this county better. Now, I don't have to tell you what's going on in society. We have a lot of issues in this country. COVID is real. How about the drug problem? Two years ago, we took 362 pounds of meth off the street. One of our dogs got it. So my dream is to build the K-9 Unit so we can get to more drugs, more fentanyl, more meth, more cocaine, so it's not killing our kids. So that's still my commitment. I'm getting pretty old. I wanted Doug to hire me as a deputy, he said, "No, you're too old." Sorry about that, buddy. But anyway, I still have enough gas in the tank to work on this stuff. And I can't say enough about our Board, commitment. Ginny Howardson, Sherry Almeyer, and of course, my wife, who Doug says put up with my crap for the last six years. So anyway, thank you so much for your time, and we're going to keep working for you. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Chairman Gould. John, John, I want to personally thank John. I don't, I want to reiterate, I know how hard this man works, and he's always, he's always calling me. They're doing tons of fundraisers, and we have a fundraiser coming up. You want to just tell everybody about that?
Thank you, Hildy. November 6th, Fort Mojave, Mojave Marketplace is a fundraiser for the K-9 Unit. It's a car show. We're going to have all of our dogs there. We'll be doing demonstrations, and my God, you're all welcome to come. But that's how we make money. You know, if somebody asked me, "How come you don't get any money from the county?" Well, that's the way it is. We're going to go with whatever we got, and we're going to keep pursuing this to the best of our abilities. So you're all invited to the car show. Come on down and have some fun. November 6th, Mojave Marketplace from 9 to 3. Thank you. Thanks, Hildy.
And that was John being brief. Thank you very much for allowing us.
Thank you, Sheriff. Board of Supervisors, Consent Agenda. The following items listed under Consent Agenda will be considered as a group enacted upon by one motion with no separate discussion of said items unless a board member so requests. In that event, the item will be removed from the consent agenda for separate discussion and action. I'm Supervisor Bishop. Anything to remove?
I do not.
Supervisor Angus.
Nothing this morning.
Supervisor Johnson. 29. Supervisor Lincolnfelter.
Nothing this morning, Mr. Chairman.
And let's see, 14, 24, and 25. Looking for a motion to exclude items 14, 24, 25, and 29.
So moved. Second.
Heard that motion in second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The guys appear to have it. Do have it, so order.
Good morning, Chairman Gould, members of the Board. Item number 14 is a carryover. We have two-year contracts for both of these that are listed here. Simply, when we actually put the budgets forward, they're estimations. Once we have the hard numbers, we then come back to the Board and submit it. That's what you see here today.
And these are community development block grants?
That would be correct, Chairman.
Do they require us to give any social equity training to our employees?
Chairman Gould, members of the Board, I'm not aware of any of those comments or trainings that have to be done. The only, the only training that I'm aware of that is done in our department is through the C.O.C., the Continuum of Care. And simply that being said, it's an option for the, for the county to take it, but there's no action required to actually implement any of those things that are listed there.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
I've got visuals this morning. Good morning, Tanya Dowson, Mojave County taxpayer. This agenda item is about HUD's Community Development Block Grants and HUD's Housing Rehab Programs. Taxpayers from all across the county are being forced to pay for water heaters, air conditioners, roofing, windows, weatherization, bedroom, bathroom, and kitchen remodels or repairs, water heaters, decks, et cetera, for those who are low-income to moderate income. This is blatant wealth redistribution. As P.J. O'Rourke said, "There's no virtue in compulsory government charity, and there's no virtue in advocating it." A politician who portrays himself as caring and sensitive because he wants to expand government charitable programs is merely saying that he's willing to try to do good with other people's money. Well, who isn't? And a voter who takes pride in supporting such programs is telling us that he'll do good with other people's money if there's a gun held to his head. It's not a badge of honor to do what you feel is good with plundered money. In addition, affirmatively furthering fair housing requirements are attached to HUD's Community Development Block Grants. I realize you say you've been taking HUD grant money forever, and it's never been a problem, and you've never been audited. President Trump had taken the teeth out of HUD's affirmatively furthering fair housing requirements, but Biden put the teeth back in. This is a whole new ballgame. HUD's affirmatively furthering fair housing rule gives HUD the power to withhold federal funding to state and local governments that do not comply with its affirmatively furthering fair housing requirements. The rule now gives HUD immense leverage over our local housing and zoning laws. Our land use and zoning laws are supposed to be controlled by our local community and our local elected representatives who see to it that laws are constitutional and reflect our wishes. But now Biden's centralized government in some far-off land dictates to us how to develop our community in exchange for quote-unquote "free" money. As someone who values the American philosophy of life, liberty, and property are inherent and inalienable rights, I find these centralized government repulsive. HUD was established as a Democrat, as part of Democrat President Lyndon Johnson's Great Society in 1965. Bottom line, when the Board of Supervisors votes for HUD programs, they're advancing the Marxist Democrat agenda. Please let's not go the way of Marxist Democrats. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. What's the will of the Board?
Chairman Gould, motion to approve item 14 as proposed.
Second.
You've heard that motion in second. Any further discussion?
Chairman Gould, I would just have one question.
Sure.
Director Smith. It's a two-part question, Director Smith. When was the housing rehab program in Mojave County initiated or started? And the second part of that question is, do all Arizona counties have a housing rehab program?
Chairman Gould, Supervisor Lincolnfelter, I believe it was established in 1990. That's when we became a housing authority here in Mojave County. I believe we've had it since then. I could double-check on those actual dates, but we did form a housing authority in 1990. In regards to the rest of the state, I couldn't speak upon that. I know that there's at least, I want to say, 10 other housing authorities within the state of Arizona, but I couldn't speak for the exact number, but I could find that for you.
Thanks. Other questions for Mr. Smith? I would not vote, if I were in Congress, I would not have voted to create this program. And I voted against creating programs at the state level, and I agree with the Speaker that this is wealth redistribution. The problem is, is they're taking our money, and it isn't going to make a darn bit of difference if we don't, if we take this money or not in the, in the national debt. They expand, they've rented a budget deficit every dang year, and they continue to take the money. We might as well try to put the money to good use. It needs to be stopped at the federal level. And you're out of order. There's a motion on the floor. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The guys appear to have it. Do have it, so order. Let me look. Tanya Dowson, come on up.
Good morning, Tanya Dowson, Mojave County taxpayer. This agenda item is paid for through the American Rescue Plan Act, more aptly named American Reparations Plan Act. This means that the vast majority of taxpayers from across the country are being forced to pay for a water system that they will never use. I paid for my own well and all of its associated costs. I bought my own water storage tank. I paid for repairs to my water system. Taxpayers across the country should not be forced to pay for water systems for other people. This is another one of Biden's Marxist wealth redistribution scheme, "From each according to his ability, to each according to his needs." We must not participate in Biden's transformation of our government. And what we really need to be careful of when we take these grants isn't so much that we're taking federal tax money, but it's the strings and the regulations that come with it. That's what's dangerous when the federal government can dictate to us our zoning and our land use laws. That's where the problem becomes serious. So it's not just about the money, it's about the commitments and the laws and regulations that they're going to enforce on us. Thanks.
Thank you, ma'am. Any further discussion? I've read the rules, DARPA. I spent three days reading the rules, and there was nothing in there that I objected to that created strings or made us educate people in social equity or anything else that I, as a conservative, would find objectionable. People talk about the rules, but I'm not sure that people have actually read the rules. I read them, my assistant read them. That's what we were looking for, is for strings that we would be objectionable to, and we did not find any strings.
Chairman Gould.
Supervisor Bishop.
This request is within District Four, so I will make a motion that we approve as proposed.
Second.
You've heard that motion in second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The guys appear to have it. Do have it, so order. Number 25.
Good morning, Tanya Dowson, Mojave County taxpayer. This agenda item is also paid for by the American Rescue Plan, or more aptly called American Reparations Plan. It's a cleverly disguised wealth redistribution scheme designed to redistribute money to low-income communities, shamelessly using children as cover. According to the Board Packet, taxpayers from communities across the country are being forced to pay for building repairs, maintenance projects, new computers, and new staff. Taxpayer money should not be used for wealth redistribution programs. Thanks.
Thank you, ma'am.
Chairman Gould.
Supervisor Angus.
This is in my district, so I'll make a motion to approve item 25.
Second.
You've heard that motion in second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The guys appear to have it. Do have it, so order. 29. Who pulled 29? Oh, Supervisor Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have to say, this is pushing the nanny state. At some point, we're going to speak up for the bill. That's all. Thank you.
Chairman Gould.
Supervisor Angus.
We have Don Bishop, he's in charge of the program. The amount of this transfer is $2.3 million.
Yes.
And it was part of a three-year allocation hard-fought by three rural counties for this program. We're in year two. Set, it was a $21 million, three-year allocation, this was year two, divided up into three counties, came out to $2.3 million, and I believe that we are getting in the third year. And I'm going to make it a point to make sure that there's always money for this program. And I think when, when the results are seen, that we will have no problem getting that because we've already seen fantastic results in Yavapai County, and I'm proud to be a part of this for Mojave County. So with that, unless... He's up there.
Did you want to?
I don't have anything to say unless somebody has questions specifically.
This is a state grant, correct?
It's state-appropriated money, so yes.
It's a budget item.
Right.
So with that, I'll make a motion to approve item 29.
Second.
Did you have a question?
Just wanted to make a statement, if I may, Chairman Gould. Want to thank Supervisor Angus for her work, the fighting for the money at the legislature, and also to you and your staff as you continue to still be on the cutting edge. I mean, we're the second county, I believe, in the state to go down this path. Is that correct?
Yavapai County was the first, and I like to claim that we're the second, we're the furthest along behind Yavapai County in the reentry program.
When the data starts flowing in, that, I think that there's going to be data that shows it's a benefit to the taxpayer for money that we're not having to spend on jail costs.
Correct.
Thank you.
There's a motion in second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The guys appear to have it. The guys appear to have it. Do have it, so order. Public hearing. Item 35. Item 35 is a public hearing. I'm going to open the public hearing. Item 35 is a public hearing, I'm going to open the public hearing on item 35. Anyone here to testify on item 35? Anyone care to testify on item 35? Hearing none, I'm going to close the public hearing on item 35. What's the will of the board?
Chairman Gould, motion to approve.
Second.
You've heard that motion, and second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Those opposed, say nay. Yeah, it's appear to have it. Do have it, so order. Regular agenda. Item 36.
Chairman Gould, members of the board, good morning. Item 36 is an item that was on the last agenda. The applicant was unable to make the last meeting, so he had asked that this item be continued for this meeting. This item is a rezone in the Mojave Valley area, going from an RE residential recreation zone to a CRE, commercial recreation zone, to allow for pickleball courts, installation, and sales. Basically, our understanding is the applicant intends to construct a number of pickleball courts, say that fast, pickleball courts on the property to hold events, but then also to generate sales that they will then construct on their properties.
Was there any letters of opposition?
I checked this morning, we still have not received any letters of opposition on this.
Got a member of the public, Nathan Holm.
Chairman Gould, if you will, Mr. Holm is the applicant, but I'd also like to hear from the owner of the property.
Okay.
She's here as well, on behalf of the owner.
Ma'am, if you'll state your name for the record, please.
Cheryl DeBout, West Care.
Yes, yes. Thank you, Chairman, thank you, Supervisors. My name's Nathan Holm with Pickle Roll, and we are the ones that would like to rezone the space, to have a demo area and actually have pros come in and do instruction and lessons, and also sell our product. It's the first rollout pickleball court, and we're super excited to be part of it. The climate's really good for us for pickleball, and like, today's an excellent day, and we really like to be part of the community on our pickleball.
So you sell courts?
Yes.
And it's a rollout court?
Yes, sir.
Interesting.
So I know the property has been with West Care for a very long time, and it's also been vacant for a very long time, so we're really excited about this. We are, the money that, the purchase, it's a lease purchase, and it's all going back into West Care, Arizona, which we put it back into the community. We do a lot with the community and everything that he, the rent, and then when he does purchase it, will go back to us, so we can help our community. I thought that was really important for, because Cryz is kind of one of those buildings that's been around forever, long before I was around, and I've been here for 11 years with West Care. So I just thought it was really important to let you know that we are going to, we support what he's doing, West Care, the senior management team, and he's been down there, and he plans on making all the repairs. We have tried to do a lot of stuff with that building, but it needs well over a million dollars' worth of repairs, and that's part of what Nate is doing, is also going to repair the facility and make it beautiful again. And the neighbors don't want any social service down there, so we have to respect that as well.
Supervisor Angus.
So you said Cryz, but for those who don't maybe understand that, how many years ago the county gave that property over to West Care as part of a property confiscation? It had been an illegal marijuana building, or whatever it was, and it was given to West Care to, what was the original use that it was given?
Cryz stand for, so it was previously Cryz, Colorado River Youth Shelter, Colorado River Youth Shelter, I think that's what it is, Cryz. And so it housed children, it was a shelter for children, zero to 18 years old, and it did that for several years, I believe. If I'm, I think it's been closed for 11 or 12 years now, it's been closed. It closed like, two years before I got here, and so I've been here almost 11 years, so maybe almost 13 years it's been sitting there vacant.
Right, and you've tried, West Care tried to utilize it, because that was while I've been here, we've gone, we tried to, for CDVG money and whatever, but there was always resistance from the neighbors and for that kind of facility, so I'm so pleased that you're now working with the neighbors. And just as another aside, I told, I met with Mr. Holm last week, and said that he has landed in the perfect county for pickleball, because Bullhead City is a sports destination city, and we love our pickleball. We are famous for our pickleball, and if anybody wants to see this guy's operation, it's pretty cool. And he's got great plans, and I'm excited that you're here, and I'm happy that West Care is putting all, every penny, right, every penny back. And what are your, the facilities that West Care runs in Mojave County?
We have the domestic violence shelter in Bullhead City. It's a 16-bed residential facility for mom and children. The door's revolving. We work a lot with our first responders, and actually, we're also part of the Domestic Violence Coalition out of Phoenix, so we get a lot of underground families that come through, and they can just stay a night, or they can stay up to six months. We have recovery housing for men and women. We have a treatment center, Hildy's House, 16-bed residential for women and young babies. They can come, they're pregnant, and have their baby, and get clean and sober, and from there, they can go into sober living, and from there, they go into transitional housing. We have nine, 10 properties, we also have apartments, that we house our vets. I work very closely with the county, we do the bashers, we do all kinds of things. In addition, we have full outpatient program. We are treatment providers for our Veterans Court in Bullhead City, as well as Quality of Life Court, and over in Laughlin, we do the treatment for their drug court. So we have a lot of programs that we do, and our goal is to continue to grow, so we are, we're expecting a baby today in our treatment center, I think that's exciting. Anyway, so yeah, we do a lot of things, and we work with not only the city, but the county a lot.
Thank you. And so this money is going to go to all those different programs, but the point is, it's staying here, because West Care is an international company.
And that seems to be always a question, yes, it stays in Arizona. Years and years ago, the house was donated, and it was also, my understanding is, there was a lot of hours of volunteering put into that place to make it, so it was, and it served as a home for children for a long, long time. Unfortunately, again, I didn't even live here then. So yeah, so it will, the money will still be back in Arizona, and then whenever, I think you have a three-year lease to purchase, so every month, that money, the lease payment will go, and then when he does purchase it, it'll also go to West Care, Arizona, as it was originally planned.
Supervisor Lincolnfelter.
Thank you, Chairman Gould. They just covered the point that I wanted to reemphasize, that it was all going to be reinvested back into our community, so thank you very much for that, appreciate it.
What's the pleasure of the board?
Chairman Gould, I make a motion to approve.
Second.
You've heard that motion, and second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Yeah, it's appear to have it. Do have it, so order.
Thank you.
Item 37. Supervisor Lotosky, or Director Lotosky, I demoted you there for a minute.
Good morning, Chairman Gould, members of the board. Item 37 is merely an acknowledgement of a tertiary maintenance petition for a short segment of roadway in the Golden Valley area. The applicant would be obligated to bring the road up to a tertiary maintenance standard for future consideration by the board for acceptance, so this is just acknowledgement and refer to staff.
Chairman Gould.
Supervisor Bishop.
Unless there's any questions or discussion, I'll make a motion to approve. This appears to be simply routine and acknowledging the receipt of the petition.
I'll second that.
You've heard that motion, and second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Yeah, it's appear to have it. Do have it, so order. Supervisor Bishop.
Chairman Gould, this is simply bringing in a new property into the Lake Juniper Estates water district, so doesn't seem to be anything unusual, I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
You've heard that motion, and second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Yeah, it's appear to have it. Do have it, so order. Item 39. Supervisor, or, there you go again, demoting you, Director Lotosky.
Chairman Gould, members of the board, this is an item that I bring to you. The Facilities Division of Public Works consists of about 24 employees, inclusive of the facility, grounds and maintenance workers, and custodial employees. They do over $4 million annually in business, and up to this point, Facilities has only had one office assistant, it's an office specialist, and this item kindly requests board consideration and approval to reallocate a custodian position, to establish an office assistant senior position, to better assist the office specialist, and really for efficiency of service, as well as potential cost efficiencies with regard to product ordering and tracking.
Questions for Director Lotosky? Hearing none, thank you, sir. What's the pleasure of the board?
Motion to approve.
Second.
You've heard that motion, and second, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Yeah, it's appear to have it. Do have it, so order. Item 40, I've got a couple of speakers, Chris Rodardi.
Chris Rodardi, Mojave County taxpayer. I oppose item 40, this is another Housing and Urban Development HUD grant, and I'd like to quote an article from the August 4th, 2022 Mojave County taxpayers' website, that really covers this topic brilliantly. HUD is fully engaged in work with the United Nations, according to its Division of International and Philanthropic Affairs. The UN adheres to the Universal Declaration of Human Rights, which pushes the backward notion that rights come from the government. In its warped vision, food, clothing, housing, medical care, social services, livable wages, and other products of our time, energy, and talent are considered human rights. Recently, HUD Secretary Marcia Fudge actually proclaimed housing is a human right, and this is an anti-American notion, it needs to be called out for, and it is, it's Marxism. The United Nations Housing 2030 Study credits HUD with implementing the UN's Sustainable Development Goals through activities which include collecting data on us, rehabbing and weatherizing housing for low-income households, housing voucher programs, which is item 40, and more. Implementing affordable housing, which is government control of private property, is central to achieving Agenda 2030's Sustainable Development Wealth redistribution goals, number one and goal number 11, which is centralized government control of land. The Mojave County Board of Supervisors accepts HUD grant money for housing rehab programs, weatherization projects, and housing voucher programs, again, that's what item 40 is, and in so doing, furthers the United Nations Agenda 2030 locally. Will our county Board of Supervisors be featured in one of the United Nations studies for its efforts at implementing the UN Sustainable Development Goals on a local level, and that would be in sync with its motto, Think Global, Act Local? When the county accepts federal grants, it must comply with grant requirements, which in many cases means surrendering some of our local authority to the federal government. So when the county accepts HUD grants, is it also required to comply with Marxist international law that treats housing as a right? Some supervisors have expressed concern, if we don't take the money, somebody else will. This justification is not about the money, this is about Mojave County voluntarily implementing the UN global agenda to transform our world. We must become a constitutional sanctuary county, and push back against the state, federal, and global governments, and refuse to accept this free grant money. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
I've got visuals. Good morning, Tanya Dowson, Mojave County taxpayer. So at a recent board meeting, Karen Vanderjack pointed out that 70% of our tax dollars goes towards wealth redistribution programs. The Housing Choice Voucher Program is a HUD program that redistributes our tax money in order to provide housing for people who didn't earn the money to pay for it. In other words, it's compulsory charity. In most cases, taxpayers are paying well over $600 a month. In some instances, taxpayers are paying over $1,000 a month. The tax money is collected through the threat of violence against peaceful people. If we don't pay our taxes, very bad things can happen to us. Our tax money is supposed to be used solely to protect our life, liberty, and property, so that we could pursue our prosperity. But our government is taking this money that was collected from peaceful people by force and giving it to people who didn't earn it. Giving plundered money to people who didn't earn it is unethical. Pawn shops won't even deal in plundered property, because it's unethical. According to HUD's Consolidation Annual Contributions Contract referenced in the board packet, grant recipients and owners are required to comply with all of HUD's regulations and other requirements, including any amendments or changes in the law or HUD requirements. Including any amendments or changes in HUD requirements, that sounds like a blank check. HUD was established as part of Democrat President Lyndon Johnson's failed anti-American Great Society wealth redistribution agenda in 1965. Just think what you could do if you had 70% of your tax money back to spend or invest how you deem to best, and imagine where our economy could be now. Most Americans are not aware of how the government is operating these days. It's not just business as usual anymore. People need to know just how insidious these life-sucking programs are. Please don't hand over our local planning authority to the federal government for the quote-unquote "free money." Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Chairman Gould, members of the-
How've those meetings with the United Nations been going?
Chairman Gould, members of the board, I can't say that I've attended one of those, being that they're held in New York, but with that being said, I'll circle back to where we're at today. In 1990, Mojave County Housing Authority was established. At that time, 50 Housing Choice vouchers were awarded to Mojave County. Currently, at today, we're just over 400, give or take. With that being said, where are we at? So where are our numbers at? So just to give the board a recap, so they understand the lay of the land, the point-in-time count, the point-in-time count, we had 26 veterans that were identified as homeless. We had 88 people that reported that they had some income, but they were homeless, they were unsheltered. 75 people reported to have- 75 people reported to have a cognitive disability. With that being said, we opened our housing waiting list. There's over 1,100 people in the county right now on the waiting list, waiting for services. So I wanted to touch on those couple things as well. But before I close with that and then give you just a little bit more data, this program has helped 19 Mojave County residents purchase a home. As of last year, 10 people actually were able to get on the list and actually participate with us to look to purchase a home. With that being said, there's nine vouchers that will be applied here. Those fall within our program that we're currently enacting, have been enacting. There's no changes to the program, and that really concludes where I'm at.
Questions for Director Smith.
Chairman Gould.
Supervisor Lingefelter.
Thank you.
Director Smith, what would you say that the goal is of the program?
The goal of the program, Chairman Gould, Supervisor Lingefelter, the goal of the program is really to help those that just need to help up to establish themselves and then move on to another part of the county through either our workforce, programs that we offer through the county, or just an opportunity to purchase a home. Because as the board knows and as we all know, the greatest wealth creator in the US is homes.
So it started in 1990 with 50 vouchers. We have 400 vouchers now, and it just continues to grow and grow and grow, right? You've got 1,100 people on the waiting list, is that what you said?
Yes, there's 1,100. But Supervisor, if I could, I'm sorry, Chairman Gould, Supervisor Lingefelter, I want to also make sure that as we look at those vouchers, that we're aware of what those vouchers are. 200 of those plus vouchers, or just under 200, I should say, are VASH vouchers. So those are for our veterans, so those are that have served the country. So when you look at it, it's really 50% of those people would be Mojave County residents that aren't veterans.
And what are the eligibility requirements for these Housing Choice vouchers?
So Supervisor, there's an extensive list. I'm not going to go through that today. I could just point out a couple things. For the income-wise, which is one of the major ones, I can touch on that. So we provide 50% of very medium income. So if you just took a family of two, that income would be $24,950. That would be one of the requirements.
Are we checking that? And the reason I ask is a different program. We had the temporary money that came through, the CAREs funding with the housing, the additional money for the, and it was like an honor system. They told us, yeah, we need this money to pay our rent. But it's, like, if you look at the applications and the paperwork they filled out, it's like, do you really check to see if they actually really need it?
Chairman Gould, Supervisor Lingefelter, yes, there is an application. We do verify their income. They have to provide, either pay, or they have to go through one of our local continuum of care partners and then receive a certificate. So if they did, they would, they would get a letter stating that they're currently homeless and they have no place. That could be one of the requirements, but we do look at income as well.
What's the timeframe that one applicant can be participating in this program?
I'm sorry, could you repeat the question?
Is there a, if this program is intended to help people that are down on their luck, get back on their feet and into a home perhaps, what's the timeframe that they're able to participate in this program?
Chairman Gould, Supervisor Lingefelter, I believe for this program, there is no extended amount of time. So if somebody was to register for this program, they could be in it, they could be on the program indefinitely.
Indefinitely, which is why we've gone from 50 to 400 vouchers.
Supervisor Gould, Supervisor Lingefelter, I would say half of those, once again, are homeless veterans that have...
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
That's all the questions I have.
Further questions for Director Smith? Hearing none, what's the pleasure of the board?
Chairman Gould, motion to approve.
You've heard that motion and second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay.
Nay.
The guys appear to have it, do have it, so ordered. I don't believe we need any action on item 41.
That's correct.
Item 42. I don't believe...
Chairman Gould.
Supervisor Lingefelter.
I would like to make a motion.
On 42?
On item 42, yes, sir. I would move to authorize Clark Hill to initiate legal action against the Bureau of Reclamation and any appropriate parties challenging the Bureau's final environmental analysis of the potential environmental effects from the town of Queen Creek's proposed GSC Farm LLC water partial assignment and transfer, and direct staff to communicate with other opposing entities about joining the action.
Second.
You've heard that motion and second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The guys appear to have it, do have it, so ordered. Item 43. Manager Elders.
Mr. Chairman, board members, as you know, Ms. Carol Collins, our current Public Fiduciary Director, has served the county residents well and the department, and is retiring. Her last day is October 14th. So with the vision and the desire to create an overlap with the incoming director, we completed, we initiated the recruitment process. We assembled an interview panel that consisted of representatives from the courts, the county attorney's office, finance, indigent defense, HR, and the current director herself. We had great interest, and it came down to two internal candidates. Both were well-qualified, both are licensed in Arizona. It was truly a difficult decision to make, but with that said, we are recommending Ms. Rhonda Mayo to be the next Public Fiduciary Director. Her effective date of employment will be October 8th, and that will create a full week of overlap with Ms. Collins where they can take care of financial assignments and signatures and matters and be ready to hit the ground. She has been with Mojave County for five years and has been in the department, working with Carol. So I think we were fortunate to have two internal well-qualified people to select from, and I'm very pleased to make this recommendation to the board. She's here in the audience. If you'd like to meet her or ask her any question, and I'm looking forward to have her continue to lead the department and build on the progress and success that Ms. Collins achieved in this department over the last five years. Thank you.
Further questions of the county manager or the applicant?
Chairman Gould, I would love to hear from the applicant.
Thank you, Supervisor. Come on up, ma'am.
I know you're prepared for this, so I didn't want to take the opportunity away from you and give us an opportunity to learn your personality in your face, so...
Okay, thank you.
The floor is yours, whatever you want to say to us.
Chairman Gould and members of the board, I just want to thank you for the opportunity to serve as the next Public Fiduciary Director. I have actually, I have actually been with the county since 2014. I started with probation, but with the public fiduciary for the last five years.
Questions for the applicant? Pleasure of the board.
Did you have a question?
I just wanted to wish you well.
Thank you.
With that, I will make a motion to approve the appointment of Rhonda Mayo and wish you all the luck in the world.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
And I'm sure Carol will have you on good footing before she flies off to St. Oregon.
I'll second that.
You've heard that motion and second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The guys appear to have it, do have it, so ordered. Item 44. County manager.
Mr. Chairman and board members, this is a recommendation for the board, for a letter of support to WECOM for a grant proposal to the National Telecommunication and Information Administration. This is specifically for the middle mile grant program. As you know and have heard, there's the long mile, the middle mile, and the short mile. And you received an update from the director... Thank you, Supervisor Lingefelter, Director Jeff Swatka, who is with ACA about a month ago. Mojave County is really in great position to have broadband services that match or exceed any county in the state. That is in part predicated on the interstate system for broadband that has been laid out by the state, which has us connected to Phoenix as a hub through Flagstaff, through I-40. When we looked at that network for review, we recognized that the future I-11 was really not included. So it was Mojave County. It was us that made the recommendation to the state to consider I-11 as a future interstate and provide connectivity through the US-93 corridor, Wickenburg, all the way to Las Vegas. That is what this letter of support is for, and it will truly positions our county for that redundancy that we so want and need, because then we will have connection to two hubs, either Las Vegas or City of Phoenix. And with that said, I'm happy to answer any question, but recommend that the board sign a letter of support for this grant.
Questions for the county manager?
Chairman Gould, if I might. Most of this will be within my district, so I'll go ahead and make the motion and approve that we do write this letter of recommendation for WECOM.
I'll second.
You've heard that motion and second. Any further discussion? I don't know if this will help the cell phone service between WikiUp and Wickenburg or not, but it would be nice to be able to make a phone call when it can see cell towers. Any further questions, discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The guys appear to have it, do have it, so ordered. Madam Clerk, item 45.
Chairman Gould, board members, this is just a kind of a housekeeping item. The hearings for the Board of Vigilization were held last week, so these are just the results that have to be voted on for the board, and then we can send out the results.
So we vote to accept these?
Chairman Gould.
Supervisor Lingefelter.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
You have a motion and second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The guys appear to have it, do have it, so ordered. That concludes our agenda. Anything else for the good of the order? Hearing none, adjourn.